Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joey, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any additions or changes to this evening's agenda?
I'd like to give a brief Emerald Ash Bore report at the end.
All right, Michael, we'll put your report right after our third reading for the ordinance.
Sure.
Dear ordinance. Okay, and then we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the November 12 council meeting, approval for an employee celebration for city employees on December 20th. And council, you know, as we do this every year, we have a lunch and a celebration with all of our city employees, and we ask for your approval in that to expend up to a total of $1,500 to put on the party. We need to have that as part of our record, so that is actually what we're asking you this evening for 1,500, up to $1,500. We have a resolution for employment at the Fairfield Police Department, and that is a telecommunications operator. We have a resolution for employment of park and rec. We have four lifeguards positions, and approval of claims in the amount of $434,968.01. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items?
We just have some ambiguousness, if that's a word, in the minutes.
Okay.
Because in the first paragraph, we say, "Mayor pro tem, call the meeting to order," but in the second paragraph, we have Mayor Malloy presiding.
Uh-oh, I was not here.
Oh, no. So, I'm just pointing them out.
As amended.
Thank you, Connie. I'll change that.
Good.
Thought we should just straighten it out, have it clear.
Thanks. And so entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda based on that amendment?
So moved.
Moved by Boyer?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
I'm going to abstain from the vote on the Park and Rec Department for the contact that I have had with one individual that's on that list and the position that they had placed my family in about four years ago.
Okay, so we have one abstention, and the motion does pass five to one. Thank you. Next, counsel, we're going to have our Jefferson County Board of Supervisors join us for a discussion on the Law Center 28E agreement. Sheriff Morton is here with us as well. Lee, Dick, Becky, welcome. Good evening. So I know that there's a discussion that you wanted to have about the 28E agreement. I wanted to ask, has there been a prior discussion with the service agency about the agreements or anything in particular that has been in discussion for some time that you wish the whole council to look at?
We haven't had any discussions specifically in the service agency. This was something that came up after Sheriff Morton took office, and we got to looking at some things and with some concerns that he had that we thought maybe we could bring to the attention and see if there was some common ground there that we could make some changes.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is if there were members of the service agency that wanted to comment ahead of time from the council side, but that's fine, we'll take, we'll look at these points this evening. So, go ahead.
Okay, you folks can read in front of you. The current 28E agreement was signed in July of 1999 and has not been readdressed since then. And I believe the reason was, was they did everything by square footage. 67% of the building was county, 33 city. Well, since that time, it's never been readdressed, and there's a couple of things that I've written down on here that I'd like to have readdressed as far as more fair and equitable between the two entities.
Greg, would you just back up a second, just for everyone else, and just that the shared agreement is based on the expenses for operating the building?
Correct.
And the current status is that the county is responsible for 67% and the city 33%?
Correct.
And the rationale, just so that everyone else knows as well, is just that the county maintains the jail?
Correct.
Yes.
One of the bigger things is that I pay 100% of the bills out of my budget, and then the city reimburses the county, goes back in the general fund to backfill my budget, however, it still shows a negative on my budget. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this forward. Since that July of 1999 agreement's come along, we've had plenty of time to start looking at certain parts of this 67-33 split that I think should be a little more towards 50-50 because it doesn't have anything to do, basically, with the building itself. If you look at number one, the Iowa system currently is, we pay 67, the city pays 33% on that. And what the Iowa system is, is when we call in a driver's license check, registration check, stolen article or vehicle check, criminal history or warrant check, the state of Iowa charges us every time we get on the radio and ask for these checks. In doing that, Julie and I have talked about it, because of the dense population of Fairfield and the more officers Fairfield has compared to Jefferson County, I'd like to see that bill come to the city where they pay 50%, and then they bill the county for 50%. Because Julie and I were talking, I think, you know, because of the dense population and more officers, I think they're using the Iowa system more than we are. But like I said, that comes out of my budget, whole bill, and I, in turn, don't see that money come back in. And you're talking about, last year's figures was $9,456 for the year because they bill us quarterly. The next thing is the maintenance, which is mowing, janitorial, and pest control. Well, that has nothing to do with square footage of the interior of the building, that's just overall maintenance and grounds of the Law Center itself. As I said, you know, we're paying 67, city's paying 33, I'd like to see 50-50 out of that as well. The only thing in that square footage-wise would be the pest control, but if we don't do pest control back in the jail, then we have that issue up front. So that's why that's a little different. That does incur on square footage. Last year, we paid...
Greg, you're gonna give the total?
Yeah, last year, we paid janitorial, the bill was $27,564 per year, that's $27,564 a year. Pest control was $792 for the year, and mowing was $1,748 for the year. I have renegotiated with the hospital to get it down to $21,900 for this fiscal year we're currently in. That's for janitorial with the Jefferson County Health Center. Copy paper, I think it's a 50-50. I don't know how Julie feels about it, but you know, we all use copy paper. The jail uses it, the deputies use it, the police department uses it, and dispatch uses it. I'd like to see that also at a 50-50 split.
And we actually on that have more criminal cases than they do. So, I mean, we probably by far use 50% of that paper.
The bill on that last year, because we got one pallet of paper, was $1,276, and I don't think that price has changed for this year. So the total contributions or expenditures from my budget for the 2012-2013 fiscal year was $35,172. If you split that in half, that'd be $17,586, you know, split in half. The thing is, we don't have a crystal ball. What costs this money? I know the contract with the hospital's solid, but we can't say copy paper's not gonna go up, and we can't say jan, well, not janitorial, but pest control or the mowing itself doesn't go up either. So, you know, I just think on this 28E, if we add an addendum into the current 28E that was written in 1999, to make it a little more fair and equitable for the county would help us out immensely.
Okay.
Also, yeah, Tim Dillon, Tim Dillon hit me up with this, too. The service agency is our governing agency, and I'd like to see the service agency, we'll add that into 28E as well, as being the governing agency for any grievances that we might have between the city and county.
As it always has been. That's, yeah, that's why, I mean, I think it's fine that we're discussing it here tonight, but I served on a service agency for eight years, and that was the place where we did a lot of that, a lot of that planning and talk, but...
Right, it hasn't been happening.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And Jimmy, does the current 28E have a citizen participant? And who is that?
It'd be Tammy Jones. She's the head of the service agency right now.
Okay. And I'm just trying to think that, I know they chaired the meetings.
Correct.
So those are, okay, those are still ongoing? When was the last time in your knowledge that the service agencies met?
It was this summer.
It was, okay.
Yeah, we discussed, that's another thing, we're using service agency money to help with the maintenance of the building right now as well. We repanned, Julie and I both have repanned the interior of the Law Center and done some spiffing up and so forth, and that's been through service agency money.
Biggest in the concrete on the outside and the tile.
That, too, yeah.
And we're talking about requesting this amendment and changes for fiscal 2014-15?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Chief, I'd ask you to address, and, yes?
One other thing is, is the old Law Center, the square footage has changed on the usage of that over the years. You know, the public health nurse now has taken over part of it, and the fire chief, fire chief has got part of it. And I think we, the basement is virtually vacant anymore because it does, it's not handicap accessible. It's a simple thing, we just need to look at the square footage on that also.
Okay.
As long as we're taking care of this, and so, it's one more thing.
So you'll want to review that also as part of it?
Right.
Sure, okay. Thank you. Chief, your responses to the three airs of request?
I think that they're fair and equitable. I, you know, we do run the bulk of the NCIC system. The stuff that he's brought up is not unjust, you know, it is a fair and equitable split with those items that he brought up. And one of the things that probably need to do is get this approved before we start getting into the budget, our budgets are due here in a couple of weeks. So we need to make a decision on this prior to submitting our, the next fiscal year's budgets.
I would agree with that, both counts there.
Okay. Counsel, any questions or concerns? Would you want this to go?
I have a question. Currently, at the old Law Center, the park and rec department takes care of the grounds? Is that correct? I've seen Pam Kraft out mowing.
I think she does that privately.
Oh, okay, okay.
She does that on the side as a private contractor, and the county gets the bill.
The only reason I ask is because I knew Pam was a park department worker, and we do a lot of mowing because of parks and that throughout the city, and it doesn't seem to me that it's too large of an area out there to not be able to be handled by our personnel, you know, in either location or both. And that may be one way to cut down on some expenses here. I know that snow removal's probably taken care of by the county forces out there, and the city wouldn't participate in any of the funding for salt, sand, moving.
There's no charge for that, we just take it.
And it would seem to me that it would be kind of a similar hand-in-hand type of change that could be made that could lower expenses that way, but I don't know how the sheriff feels about that or our chief.
And that's a great suggestion because, you know, like, the county went over and mow, the county goes over, mows the civic center, and nobody sees the bill for that. And so when government entities work together, it's a plus for everybody. So that would be a very simple thing to do, yes.
I don't see why we couldn't do that. We'll look at that, that's a reasonable consideration, I think, too.
It's not a lot of money. I'm not talking about thousands of dollars here, but I think in the spirit of cooperation and knowing that we work with 28E agreements all the time, it may be well off that we look at that for this particular situation.
That's a good idea.
Maybe more than half of this would be taken care of then, anyway.
There's quite a little bit out there yet.
I'd like for you folks to understand that June and I work very well together, and the city and county do little things here and there that doesn't reflect back on any billing. It's a scratch-back, scratch-back type thing, and Julie's been more than, you know, amicable on everything we've done, just as I've tried as well. So it's, there's no problems or rifts here, it's just we're trying to...
No, I'm just trying to look to a solution that's beneficial to both of us, and again, I have seen this employee over mowing at the old Law Center, and I wasn't sure if that was under, you know, the city's direction to do that, or if that was a private contract to do that, but...
Because right now, mowing is privately contracted through Mark Miller, so...
Okay, all right.
I have a question about the old Law Center. I see in the agreement from 1999 that there is a blank in there. It said that at the time of mutual occupancy, the new Law Center, the old ownership of the old Law Center be resolved by deeding that county space to the city of Fairfield for a specific amount of money. Was that amount of money ever entered?
I think that's a blank that's never been filled in. I honestly think that's never been taken care of, you know. It's, I don't know that it's broken, but I just don't think that's ever been done.
I see.
And time has a way of slipping by, you know.
Okay, any other comments, counsel?
Just one question. This all seems completely fair and reasonable. The question is, how does janitorial not, based on square footage? That's the one aspect that...
The jail is not, is not, our jail staff does all the janitorial work in the jail, and they also do a lot of maintenance work that doesn't reflect back and forth as well.
So that's excluded from that?
Correct. So...
There's common areas that we both share. That would get it probably more so to 50-50.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mike, because I was thinking, I got, you know, the jail itself is not done by JCH, CSD, and by our staff.
All right, thank you.
Okay, counsel, oh, are representatives from the service agency, Connie and Michael, and would you have any feeling to take this back? I mean, everyone's here tonight, obviously, you're representatives from the service agency here this evening, would you make a recommendation based on the chief's input that we approve these amendments?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'll second her motion. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to basically approve the proposed amendments by Sheriff Morton to the 28E agreement, then we'll go ahead and...
I just have a question before we actually act on it. If we are gonna supply all the, I mean, right now, it's been, you know, the proposal was to split the maintenance, the mowing and janitorial, which you said would be about $21,000 of the 35 in question?
The janitorial services was more than, the mowing was more like $1,500.
Mowing was $1,740.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And the pest control was $792.
Right, it's $9,456 a year for the Iowa system, janitorial is $21,900.
That's right.
Pest control's $792, mowing $1,748, and copy paper's $1,276.
Okay, so that's very minimal. Okay, good.
So we're, so, right, so you are approving these amendments into your 28E. The actual budgets will be determined as we go through the budgeting process, so, okay. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Counsel, while our, what's that? I'm sorry? Yes, please.
Go ahead and take care of our business right now, because it is on our agenda to discuss...
Okay, so you will take action tonight? All right, thank you.
We have on the agenda to consider the amendments to the 28E agreement between the county and the city on the Law Center. I would entertain a motion to approve those amendments. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passed.
Hey, Lee, do you have a, like, a revision? Like, we've got into this with a lot of 28Es, that like every five years, we readdress this?
We do it yearly, every November we can.
I don't know if it needs to be done every year, but...
It hasn't done 14, so I think we need to be a little better than that about it.
Yeah, it is currently, in the current, in the current 28E agreement, it does give us the option to review it, and any changes we want to make, we start the process in November of that year, which is why we're discussing it in November of this year.
Right, great, thank you.
I'd like one last thing.
That never fails.
Good, I'm glad it's after the business portion.
I know, one last, and Councilman Boyer and I have talked about this in the past, and, you know, we have a great police department, and we have a great sheriff's department. And to me, it's all about the taxpayers in Jefferson County and Fairfield, but seriously, sometime, we really ought to sit at the table and look at joining hands and becoming one department. I think there could be dollars and cents saved for all the taxpayers out there put together. And there's always a territorial type situation, but I just think it could be done. And with that, I'm not gonna say another word.
Well, we will. I don't know whether you dropped a bomb or planted a seed, but either way, we will, yeah, I'm sure you did. You know, and I know those kinds of discussions do ruminate a little bit, and, you know, I don't know whether the, you know, the service agency's the place to have those discussions or whether it's within our own council to evaluate something like that and then maybe come back and see, but we appreciate you bringing that up. And I've got one for you. Not jail-related, no, 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 it's not that. We do have on our agenda tonight, I just wanted to make you aware, because I know that our, this is regarding the pool and gym task force, and I know that they're going to be on your agenda, I think, for December 2nd to talk about, to give you kind of an update on where they are, and I think ask for a, another opportunity to let the county voters look at this project again. But one of the things that we are moving forward with that will be important for the project either way is a CAT grant, the Community Attractions and Tourism Grant. The city received a $800,000 reward in 2005 for the Arts and Convention Center, and we haven't utilized that program again. Many communities have used it two and three times. It's probably getting to the end of its life at this point. There's an application deadline, January 15th. We are making an application for that, there's $4 million in the budget for that program for next year, so it depends on who you're competing against. But I did spend some time in Des Moines a week ago looking over applications, successful applications from other communities around the state that either had a recreation project or a pool project, and the program has funded quite a few of those all over the state for the last 11 years that it's been in existence. So I think we have, you know, obviously, we've got a good project right now with the ratio of private money to public money, and also the money that the city's committed so far makes the financial portion pretty strong for us. So I think we have a pretty decent likelihood of getting some award out of this. We are going to be asking in this resolution for 1.8 million, which is 20% of the project, which has been advised as the maximum that we should ask for at any one given time. But as you recall from the last CAT application that we did, it does require both city and county to participate. And I'm not asking for anything specific right now, but just to be aware that that application will probably be discussed also at that December meeting, and, you know, there'll be, there'll be some interest in seeing if there's some participation. It may be just that, you know, the county vote is the participation of the county, and if it fails, it, you know, it's, there isn't a contribution, but we'll have, you know, we will be having that discussion. The city is the grant author, so we're putting in the application, but the task force is really managing the grant for us, and Dietrich Detman of Pathfinders is writing the grant for us. Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, I have a suggestion. I'm not opposed to the county contributing towards pool and rec center. There was a ballot, and the ballot did fail. He would take another ballot, and this is just out of me. This has not been a conversation with the board, but I'd like to see the committee that's driving this forward take and bring a petition to the board of supervisors with 500 names from the rural fund. Legally, it could come from any fund, in other words, it could come out of the city. But if the rural fund's gonna pay for it, I would like to see that board bring us a petition of 500 names of people out there that's really gonna pay for it. I think it would tell us two things. We got at least 500 people that's gonna come and vote, and if they're gonna take and put their name on there that they want to vote and they're in favor of, there would probably be 500 votes for it, at least. It would take some work on that committee in order to take and go out and get the 500 signatures to bring us a petition to put it on a ballot. But that's what it's gonna take, it's gonna take some work of that committee to move it forward. And I, for one, because it's gonna be another $10,000 bill to those people, to the county, to put it on the ballot, I think mull it over a little bit, it doesn't sound like a bad, a bad thing to do, but it's, it's never really heard of before, that I know, and it's not a law, it's not a rule, but I think it would work.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The vote notwithstanding and that, if I remember correctly, and I may not, but if I remember correctly, on the Civic Center deal, didn't the county provide some in-kind
Yes.
on that? So in a worst-case scenario, that's an option that's, that may be available as well.
Yeah, exactly. I don't, I don't believe they have any set ratios about what they expect, and many times, as they did with the city, they will tell you if your contribution is not enough for the grant itself, but, yeah, it's, it could be more of a nominal, so, you know, just for the application itself, and, you know, we'd appreciate you considering that, too. It was that, that was a $25,000 in-kind contribution at the time. Yeah.
I didn't remember the amount, but I thought we did something of that nature.
Okay, and we can pass your comments on to the task force deck?
They'll hear me, and they'll come and talk to me.
Right, I'm sure, they'll, they'll love hearing that before Thanksgiving, before their holiday coming up. Anyway, thank you very much. And counsel, what I'd like to do then is to move that up on our agenda, approval of the resolution, and, you know, essentially, you're authorizing the, this becomes a part of the grant that you support the submission of a CAT grant for 1.8 million dollars towards the pool and gym project. You're essentially saying two things that are mentioned at the end, the city fully supports the pool and recreation project and agrees to fully operate and market the facilities as to secure its use and success upon completion, and two, the CAT application will request 1.8 million in support for both development of the project. So you're approving, you're basically saying you support it, and you're acknowledging the amount that we're requesting. Moved by Revelinsky?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next, counsel, we'll move to our...
So, Mayor?
Yes?
I want to thank you guys for doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
We had a marathon meeting this morning. I'm going home.
I know we could go on, but we'll, we'll move with our agenda. We really appreciate you all taking the time coming today. Sheriff, thank you very much. Yes. Okay, next, counsel, we'll move to approval of a pre-application for our 2015 Airport Improvement Program, and I think to give us some background on this, I'll ask Robert Lyons. Robert? Robert?
Hello, good evening. I'm here to ask for the approval of the Fairfield Airport Improvement Program. Each year, the DOT, as I stated in my email, asks for an update each year, and this year the Airport Committee, we did an update in 2018 for funding for a fuel farm replacement due to the age, and that's why I'm here tonight. Any questions I can answer? Be glad to.
Robert, any comments on your five-year program?
It's going great. Our project that's going to happen next year is moving along really, really well. Our engineering part of it, we got the grant from the DOT, is just about done. And as a email that I sent you before on the whole project of the building, you should have got all that in detail. You know, it's going great and I appreciate the city's help and the mayor and Joy and Kevin and their support throughout this whole thing.
Great. Thank you, Robert. And this is, Council, something that we do on an annual basis as well to approve our five-year plan, and that is very important because, as you know, a lot of the projects that we do at the airport are covered 95% from federal funding, so it's important that we have this in place, have this done. Moved to approve? Okay. Moved by Hallie to approve.
Second.
Second by Boyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Council, we have our annual TIF report, and I'll ask Kevin if he has any comments on that. Nice to see we're drawing some of these projects down.
We are drawing some of them down. This is, this report, of course, just includes the TIF projects. I'll let Joy go into it in just a second. Just kind of includes the TIF projects we have been paying on for quite some time. Our TIF project on Highway 1 and our new TIF district on Highway 34, of course, 34 not going to really see any action over the next year, we don't believe. Of course, with Tracy leaving FIDA, most recently, they'll be getting someone new and that project has slowed down a little bit on that side. On Highway 1, we will be doing some work over there on the frontage road here in the spring as part of our capital improvements. For that project, it'll be the portion that will be included with the Pilot Grove property. That is not included on this TIF report because, of course, we haven't incurred that debt yet. We will be doing that before the project. Shall we do it in the spring? Or should we do it in the spring? And we'll be doing that, getting into those discussions quite soon, but that will be included on your next year's report as a certification. But Joy, if you want to add anything to this year's report, which, of course, this is a yearly report and we do it every year, so.
I think you just got the summary page, but the Wagon Wheel and West Jackson really has not been very good for the city of Fairfield. We're carrying negative balances. They expire in two years. Whenever it's elderly or low-income, TIF, it just has not been very good. That's why you have a negative balance. The Carrington Point is going to be okay, but, yeah, those two have really, we're $176,000 in the hole for Wagon Wheel.
Yes, our payments will expire.
Our payments expire in two years, but we're getting the maximum income on our property taxes, but it just, it's not even close to what we're paying out.
So basically, what we're saying is although these projects, these two projects were great benefit to the city and great benefit to the citizens, they worked in that way. What didn't work here was the way that this, when we worked them out, the way that we worked them out didn't have the numbers really working for the term of the note. Now, we'll be paying those since they are low-income housing and senior housing, I think it's an LMI project as well. We will have an LMI fund going forward that we've been talking about, you know, getting set up and working on, hopefully. That's one way that we could abate those leftover debts because it is low-to-modern income. Hopefully, John and I have been discussing that, plus there's a couple of other angles we're taking on that. But in the future, I assure you that if we did bring a low-to-modern income project, that's part of the reason we're getting this housing group, encouraging you to get this housing group together and set up a low-to-modern income fund, is that we vet these projects fully, we make sure those numbers work. If it's got to be 12 years or 15 instead of 10, do it right. Go to the school system, go to the county, you know, get an okay. I think today we saw ourselves working really well with our county. I think we do that a lot of different ways. This may be one of them going forward in the future. Our school system, our county, our hospital boards would all have to approve those extensions of time from 10 to 15 years. Traditionally, I've never had a problem getting those entities to do that in communities like our own that want to do something, so.
Well, let me ask a question then. I mean, there isn't, this isn't for many delinquency. This is essentially just, there wasn't enough revenue coming from the projects themselves. It wasn't...
Yes.
Now, can, is there a mechanism to extend them?
No, we won't be able to extend them because, of course, we certified in the beginning.
Right.
And therefore, we set the time limit that we would be, you know, requesting funding from that certification.
Sure.
But that's just basically it. You had a situation where the tax values didn't work out to, you know, to make that debt abatement. It can happen. It doesn't mean a project wasn't a good idea of a project, especially, you could know that going in, right? And plan for doing that with geo-bonding or otherwise paying that leftover portion. But it does mean, as the mayor insinuates, that our original setup of that, we just, the tax receipts failed us.
So I'm sorry, Joy, would you please repeat how, when those will get completed? Hang on.
In two years. We only have two years left.
In other words, we only have two years of income from the tax increment.
Right. But just for instance, Wagon Wheel, we paid $103,000 on the debt. We brought in six.
Yeah, and we're looking at that.
That's the difference. There's just no, there's just no value there for them to...
So the change in increment was very low, is that the thing?
Well, that...
The kid just hasn't increased. You know, the increment just isn't, it hasn't increased at all. I called over to the auditor's office and asked, you know, is there, is there any way, you know, why are we not getting any more? And Shannon told me that it's just, we're getting the maximum we can get, but the value just is not there.
The taxable values didn't work out. I don't know if there's some portion of it that was not taxed that people thought the pro forma was going to be or what happened.
John, I'm scratching my head here. Something doesn't make sense because where there was nothing, we built something and it certainly had, we had more value there than we had a lot.
Was that a parking lot or something before? What was it before?
It didn't have great value before. I think it was a failed problem.
I think it was a parking lot where Wagon Wheel is.
Well, and there was another commercial building that was there that was removed.
Yeah.
There was, yeah.
The credit union was in that building at one time back in the late 80s, early 90s.
But I had planned on... It wasn't thought through at the time? I mean, didn't they kind of estimate what the increment would be? And of course... That's one reason I thought it...
They projected that it's carrying...
John, can you come up to the microphone?
And that's what Shannon said. It was, it's really a puzzle because now, like Carrington Point, it's just opposite.
I kept thinking there was some change...
You're bringing in so much more than what we're paying out.
I kept thinking there may have been some actionable change in the taxable way it worked out per year. In other words, did some of these units suddenly become non-taxable, you know, and erase a good bit? But I haven't found that out yet, so.
Yeah. Wagon Wheel was a cooperative venture with the Chamber of Commerce acquiring through, I think it's a negotiated arrangement, to get that site. It was actually part of a lawsuit. There was a quiet title done and some other things. After that happened, there was a complete business plan put together on Carrington Point that included a projection as far as how it would carry the increment.
On Wagon Wheel, you mean?
Sorry. Wagon Wheel, excuse me. I'm talking wagon wheel completely. But the projections showed it would, I remember this, that it would pay off probably early.
Yeah.
So I don't know where the hole is as far as the project not carrying its value year after year, but, and I wasn't aware it was that far down.
The only thing that makes sense is that a portion of it became non-taxable.
What would become non-taxable?
At some point, some of the units through some sort of program, nonprofits in many cases run a 50-unit complex where only 25 of those are taxable as private industry and the rest of them are nonprofit status or purpose, for instance, but...
We need to have this reviewed somehow?
Yeah.
I mean, dig into it a little deeper, it sounds to me.
That's what we're in the middle of right now, but, you know.
I mean, it's been this guy for years. I mean, for the past five years, it's been in the hole.
No, I agree with Connie. We should get records from the project's inception and look at our tax revenues and when they changed dramatically because, you know, something just doesn't make a lot of sense. But maybe, I guess we just have, and it may be as simple as looking at the tax value, the valuation of the former property. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe that just didn't value out as high. But anyway, I don't think we, there aren't any answers we can provide here, and this is a report. I think it does tell us that we need to look particularly at that project because it's a nice facility and certainly upgraded from what was there.
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense that there wasn't some significant incremental value.
We do have two underwater that would be a notable thing.
And we have two years. So then I entertain a motion to approve the report. So moved. Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Boyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign? Thank you. Next, Kevin, would you explain the letter of engagement that we're going to approve?
Yes, Dustin Miller is a young attorney working with the League of Cities who has a specialty in 202 and HUD housing programs. And we have located him after a long search, going here and there over our Logan Apartments divesting. And we are recommending that we sign these contracts and do some private looking into that. The League is okay with him doing that for us and he'll basically be talking to HUD and just working on the different aspects of the sale that we were concerned about, our contractual, any contractual obligations we may still have to HUD and just working out, things will help us get that contract finished, so. I don't know, John, you want to add anything to that?
We have been through a divesting before, but when we got into the projects in town that are 202, Section 8, we're talking about Logan in '78, we're talking about Calhoun in '83. The way we got those projects accomplished was by having what I would call an introducing representative or somebody very specialized in their rules and regulations and so forth. And at this point, in divesting, we've had a couple of holes as far as being sure of our Logan agreements that were that old and that long ago, allowing us to simply step away from it. And this man's specialization, having worked actually in the agency, will help us decide whether we are a, quote, governmental entity that is required to obtain permission from HUD and USDA, or whether we are able to proceed without that permission. We're still going to have to have a representative with HUD and USDA because the program, if we want to do what I sense the council and the administration would like to see happen over there and we carry on similar to what our past experience has been as far as the residents, we're going to want to have most of the conditions and features of our Logan Apartments' operation continue. To do that, we need to maintain the Section 8 rent subsidy program that we have for essentially everybody that's in a union over there is in some way subsidized. And we need to be sure that our unit, all of the things that are, there's like eight pages or four pages of check-offs that we get inspected for periodically by USDA now rather than HUD. And we need somebody that can identify with each of those. I will tell you, I go locally to Logan Apartment Board meetings sometimes and I can read the manual and so forth, but as far as what the terms of art are on eight pages of check sheets and so forth, I'd be in trouble. This young man, in our conversations and our telephone interviews with him, I think impressed both Kevin and I, and, you know, I'm hoping he'll do this.
Okay, thank you, John. So while we do want our contract to maintain the status and operations the way they are in order that to be fluid and with continuity, we need to make sure that through this guy's expertise, so.
So this is, in other words, a step toward presumably looking down the road at disposing of Logan? Is this correct?
This gentleman is going to help us know how we can properly put together the contract to do exactly what we said we wanted to if we were to divest of it, which is to have it remain in Section 8.
I mean, I just question the need for an additional expense at this time, I guess is what I was concerned with.
If we were to divest of Logan, we'd have to do this. And so we felt like that we had gotten that direction from council earlier and that we'd go ahead and take this step in order to be able to bring this thing back to council for full approval in December.
I just wanted to comment, if I may. My first pass, I thought, boy, this is really cheap. He's only going to charge $25 per hour. It says in his letter, my fees for legal services, $125 plus any expenses for copying and...
So you should approve that, John.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, the young man is 150 years old. But that's still quite affordable as far as attorney fees go.
But does he have an estimate?
Yes, it is.
Does he have an estimate for...
Of how many hours? He didn't provide an estimate. I don't imagine it will be that many hours, though, because he's already had, done some length of consulting and he's only, I think, charges for maybe a couple of hours for that. It's phone calls mostly, so.
Move for approval. Okay, moved by Revulinski to approve the letter of engagement with Dustin Miller.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kedlin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
I'm not really in favor of it, but...
Thank you. Next, we have approval for two tax abatements. Kevin, one is at 2808 West Burlington and the other at 1117 Cody Circle. Any comments on either of these?
Both abatements seem to be in order.
Okay. Let's entertain a motion then to approve, first, the request by Lee J. Partnership, 2808 West Burlington.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign? Thank you. And next, we'll take up the abating request from Steve and Tammy Kramer at 1117 Cody Circle.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign? Thank you. Council will set a public hearing for our next meeting, December 16th. That would be for the annexation of Lausdell subdivision. Kevin, any comments on that?
Well, the property issues that we were having, we did resolve. It turns out that the property in question did not belong to the DOT, the little triangle that we thought did, nor was it right-of-way. It actually did belong to the Lausdell folks, and so everything is in order.
And again, just to familiarize Council with which piece of land this is on the...
It was a, yeah, on the off-ramp. It was a small triangle there on that off-ramp area that formerly had thought, we had thought it was going to be a piece of the right-of-way. Darren had actually told me that, I think at one point, you felt like the property owner did own it or something. We had had a conversation a while back with her. I saw you smiling. But I don't know why the confusion occurred. They eventually, or initially, the DOT thought they had taken the property in the name of the county and the city. Melanie, do you want to go into it?
No.
She did most of the running down this thing in the end, but, you know, we had to...
It's a voluntary annexation. It's okay.
Yeah, it is.
Move to set the public hearing.
But it's to the east of where the New Bank and the Church are currently at and on the north side of the Highway 34 bypass. So that's the area that we're talking about annexation.
Essentially, a small little triangle.
The move by Revulinski to set December 16th for a public hearing for the annexation, voluntary annexation.
Second.
Second by Boyer. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign? Thank you. And then we have another annexation for property adjacent to Prairie Lake subdivision. That's on Walton Road, subdivision that was annexed into the city, I believe, two years ago, and there is a development going on there now. They're adding land to that. So December 16th, again, will be a public hearing for voluntary annexation.
And that will be that Phase Two of that development that they had discussed when they initially brought that to us.
That's true, they did discuss that, right.
And this is off to the north from where they currently have some development that has happened.
Yes.
Okay.[1772.04]
Move for setting public hearing.
Move by Revolinski.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Next, council, we will set a public hearing for the rezoning of the adjacent land to Prairie Lake subdivision from R1 to R2. Is that currently zoned R2?
Yes, the rest of that subdivision is zoned R2.
Is zoned R2, so it'll be matching that, and, you know, for annexation, it would come in as R1, so this is a request. Has this been through planning and zoning?
Yes, it has, with approval.
Okay. So entertain a motion to set public hearing for December 16th.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thanks. Next, council, we have an agreement with TerraCon Consultants for soil borings, and that would be surrounding, property surrounding our wastewater treatment facility. And Mel, talk to us about that, thanks.
There's actually two agreements in the new attachment that Rebecca put together this afternoon. First, I want to mention, I have Alex, Alex is here also from McClure to answer any questions. McClure went through an RFQ process and selected TerraCon. These are pass-through contracts in that we do the arrangement, and it's not already part of our contract. So the two agreements, there's one lump sum contract for $21,750. This is for soil borings at the wastewater treatment plant, and to look into the two different sites that were brought up at our public meetings. There's 13 soil borings on Site 1, 16 on Site 2, and 10 others throughout the wastewater treatment plants. And again, that is a lump sum amount. The second agreement is a not-to-exceed amount for $13,950. This is for eight soil borings throughout the Step 1 sewer. If you look at cost per soil borings, the cost on the, on the conveyance system is much higher. The reason for that is they're farther between, there's lots more travel, but they're also significantly deeper. Those soil borings are done to get a feel for water table soil conditions at the 30-foot depth that we're looking at. The sewer will be, be in that corridor, so. The total between the lump sum and the not-to-exceed is for $35,700. And a couple of things, we have received landowner permission for the soil borings around the wastewater treatment plant. We will be talking to the landowners around Step 1 before soil borings get done. And then this, these funds are also eligible for the planning and development, planning and development design loan that you guys took out. It's a three-year loan at 0% interest, so this money can be reimbursed through that fund.
Okay, thanks, Melanie. And as far as the properties that we're going to, the properties we've received permission for are all five that are, that are being considered as possible sites?
Um, no.
Is that what we're talking about, or not?
Yes, that is, that is what we're talking about. We are not doing any soil borings on Ms. Williams' property, so we didn't obtain permission to be on her, her property. The Myers' property and Congress' property were the two people that we have permission for.
Okay. But what about the other two parcels? The, can't remember the names right now.
Um, I just looked at his name today. The, the property west of Congress.
Yes, west of Congress.
We're, we're not doing any soil borings on those. We can stay on Congress' property and get what we need.
Okay. And if the other property of Ms. Williams agrees, does that come in at the same price? Or you, have you already resigned that you're not going to be doing?
We're just not going to be doing any soil borings, and then the, the results of the soil borings will let us know which route, which site we take, and then we would start appraisal of, of her property, depending on which site is chosen.
Okay.
So, yes, to clarify, we're only doing fieldwork. We're not getting into any easement negotiations or condemnation on any of the sites yet.
Okay. Thank you. Council, so then the request is to approve the agreement with TerraCon Consultants for these planned soil borings, for which we have access, revenue access for, to cover them.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin, second by Hamilton. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thanks. Thank you, Melanie. Okay, we have taken care of our CAT resolution. We'll move then to the proposing disposal and transfer of real estate and setting public hearing December 16th. You've got some splainin' to do, don't you?
Yes, Your Honor, I do. For some reason, I missed a little verbiage when we were doing the Methodist Church alley. I can't explain how I missed this, but I did. We were doing the Methodist Church alley vacation, and we vacated half of that alley instead of that whole alley. And we sold half that alley instead, well, we, we disposed of half that alley instead of the whole alley. So I don't know how I did that, but I did do that. And so now we need to take the other half and do the same thing we did for the first half. And those costs will be abated, of course, by the entity that receives them.
And so this has, obviously, this has been through three readings.
Yes.
So hopefully, December 16th, we can take care of the whole thing. The intention was for the whole alley, and the language in the, in the ordinance read the west side of the alley.
West half.
West half of the alley, and I read that three times, I just didn't realize that.
I read it more than three times.
You meant it more than three times.
So we're intending to suspend the rules in December to.
December, well, I'm just saying that would be your option, if that's what you want to do.
Set public hearing for December 16th.
First, we do need to request a public hearing.
Yes.
Moved by Hamilton to request a public hearing. Second. Second by Revolinski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? And then your ordinance, we wilt, we won't be taking a first reading tonight, though.
We could take the first reading. Could we not, John, if we were? Yeah. We could, we could do the first reading, but then we have, we'd have to have a public hearing before, prior to our second reading and.
Okay, so then, first reading this evening will be for vacating the east half.
Yeah, it just doesn't.
Can we just read it after the hearing?
I would.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is on our agenda. We are seeing it.
I would move to table this ordinance until after the public hearing on December 16th.
We could, yeah, you can do that, too. It's okay.
Moved by Hamilton to table the reading until December 16th.
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you. Council, now we'll move on to the third and final reading for our dear ordinance amendment. I was not at the last meeting. Connie, do you have anything to report as far as what kind of comments were received at that time? I know that the second reading did pass.
Second reading did pass. There were comments for, there were no comments against. However, I just want to point out that, you know, I have spoken with some people in the community, and even though there was no one that showed up to speak against, I guess the feelings are still the same from some community members, that they prefer not to have any dear ordinance. But they also feel that, you know, that it's moving forward. In that conversation, I would like to bring up that, to the community, that, that you cannot put up a target and shoot your bow and arrow in your backyard. That, that is not within our ordinances currently, and has not, and hasn't been. So number one, just you can't do target practice in your backyard within the city limits. And also that, that I ask that people be sensitive to their neighbors, that if you're dressing not just deer, or turkey, or whatever animals, that you do it in your garage, not out in your backyard, and leaving, you know, animal waste where people can see it in their backyard. It's kind of, you know, just be sensitive to your neighbors in that area, please. And, you know, I actually had a conversation today with John Morrisey about that specific fact, and we could, that would really come under the nuisance ordinance, because that could not just, that could go for the whole year, not just within deer hunting season. So, but again, we, we do ask people to be sensitive to their neighbors, and not everybody has, you know, six-foot fences around their, around their yards, which personally, I prefer that we don't. So anyway, those are just kind of some comments from last week, but also some new ones.
Okay. Thank you. And I know I had received one request from Diane Rosenberg to drop the area just south of Obie Nelson Park for its closer proximity to neighborhoods and some of that danger, but I understand that was brought up at the last meeting also. Okay. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing for those wishing to speak for or against This is the last meeting you're going to have to come to.
I came to the one that you didn't bring it up. I'm Wilma Lewis-Whitam. I live at 52 East Madison Avenue, four blocks from town. I looked out my kitchen window tonight, and there was two deer in the neighbor's yard. In the spring, I had tulips up. They came and ate them three times. They left a few. I'm much in favor of doing something.
Okay.
So I know I, I can't really turn the tide of events on this particular ordinance, but I'd like to just revisit the issue of Obie Nelson, and I know we discussed it last time. I know there was a plan to, I believe, close off some of the key roads going into the park.
The whole entire park will be closed.
I understand that, but I'm familiar with the park and the whole area around it, and I know there are multiple access points to that park. On the northern side, the proposed hunting area is actually adjacent to the open air swimming pool that is now closed. And alongside the entirety of the Obie Nelson area, there's a, a road that runs down there. I know you will close that road.
That's part of the school.
It's part of the school.
It's part of the school, and that road is closed unless baseball season is open.
Right. But I've been in the area, and I've seen many young children, groups of young people, and they don't follow the path, they don't follow the roads. And I was out there a few times this week, and I noticed kids coming from all directions, coming from the school, coming through access points from the local neighborhood, and even coming across from Highway 1. There's no way to really conceal or close down that whole area, because there are access points that run for at least 100 yards, if not more, from the south, from the north, from east, and the west.
I think the, the way that works is there's a lot of school traffic, a lot of those, a lot of traffic that you're seeing is going to and from school.
Agreed.
And the school will be closed, it will be for Christmas break during those hunts.
Yeah.
So I think a lot of that will go down. I think when the weather gets, because I walk my dog back there.
Sure.
When it's ungodly cold, and there's not very much foot traffic.
Right.
Back in that part.
Right. I agree with you totally. A school will be closed, and it's going to be cold, possibly, but on the two weekends, it's occurring at the end of December and also early in January. There's also the possibility that temperatures could be up in the 50s, could be up mid 50s, low 50s. It's unlikely, but it could happen. And there is a chance that somebody, some group of children, could be in that area. I don't see how it's really possible to shield off that whole area.
I think the statistics for the hunts speak for themselves, when we haven't had an injury.
Right.
From that, you know, the bow hunters that are going to be, they're going to be qualified, number one, and they're not shooting at every whipstitch of emotion.
I know.
The deer are going to stop, and they're going to have a good ethical shot.
Right.
And, you know, that's what in and of itself.
In the unlikely event that something happens, I feel the city has a liability issue, and it has a safety issue, and I feel that the council really needs to act in a responsible fashion, really consider this point. And I'm just talking about the Obie Nelson area because of its very close proximity to the urban environment. So, you know, please really think this one through before you vote on it, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else wish to?
Well, I hadn't really planned to speak tonight, but I would just like to point out that a typical urban hunt lasts for four, three to four months. We're only talking about four days. In a typical urban hunt, it starts in mid, mid-September to early October, and goes typically into December or into January. We're talking seven days a week, dawn to dusk. And in almost 20 years, nobody has been hurt. And we're not talking about a small, little, isolated area in most towns. Most towns, we're talking about anywhere in this city where people are able to hunt where it is. I'm not sure, I didn't bring all my, well, I've got the information with me, but, you know, they still have to stay away from occupied buildings, schools, many, many, you know, guidelines. And they're totally safe, and there has never been an accident. So I don't understand why we're making such a fuss over four days.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Am I allowed to come back?
Yeah, go ahead. Since we're, you'll get the final word.
Okay.
Unless.
Well, my understanding is that if the hunt is successful, and I think we've yet to define what success is, then next year, the plan is to expand that hunt.
Yes.
And so I think, you know, if we're looking at Obie Nelson again, and we're looking at the, the lower southern side of the middle school, then these kind of questions are going to come up again about the safety issue, if we're going to run it October through January, or even through January alone. I think there is a risk, and I think, you know, with school buildings being, you know, just a few hundred feet away from one of the proposed hunting areas, we really have to think about this carefully. Thanks.
Thank you. Simon, you know, go ahead, take your seat. I appreciate your comments about the council elected officials thinking this thing through. They have. They've been thinking about it for a year and a half. And I want to ask you, have you talked to any of the hunters that have participated in the hunt? Have you spoken to anyone who's, you don't have to get up. Have you spoken to anyone? Yes or no?
No.
Okay. So you've not had a description from someone who's actually participated as to what their mindset is and what they're actually doing when they're in that position to, to target a deer? And, and the reason I mention that is because that, for me, in terms of the safety concerns, was where, you know, a lot of that concern, your concern, was alleviated, because when you're talking to someone who is really in the midst of doing that, and how clear they are in terms of what they're shooting at, when they're shooting at, and what else is in their environment, it's, it's different than the warning that, that you're presenting. I mean, we all take the, take your concern about the necessary precaution about where this is being done, if there's anyone else in the area. But I, I think that your next step to alleviate some of your concern is to talk with someone who's participated in, in the hunt.
Yes, I completely agree with you. But next year, if the hunt is expanded, you know, we like to be able to walk safely within city limits. We don't like to have restrictions.
So that's fine, we'll, we'll talk about areas and that sort of thing, and that's, that's a fair point.
I mean, I'm just.
But our, but our experience also has been that we've actually participated in the very first hunt in one of our major walking areas, which was Jefferson County Park, and it, it has worked out. But between now and then, I can give you the names of some of the people who've participated to get some of their personal experience to maybe ease some of your concern.
I think you know. I'm not in favor of killing, you know.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's one of the rationales behind it.
Well, but that's fine, but your, your concern to the council is safety, and I just want to, just want to make the point that we talked to, to some of those people.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just trying to present something that could be related to that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have one second?
Sure.
We looked at this when we did your ordinance about the projectiles six years ago, and the park hunt out at Jefferson County Park. We talked to. We talked to DNR, and there's not liability for sanctioning a hunt. DNR doesn't get sued for letting people hunt in the woods that are regulated by DNR anymore than we're supposed to get sued if we carefully administer a hunt. And you've been very careful about this ordinance. We shouldn't be any different than them as far as the liability for operating this and regulating it. If you have somebody that's not proficient and is not competent, maybe there's an issue, but we have veterans, seasoned officers supervising, and we're only going to have a very limited number of hunters that are all going to be tested for proficiency. So, where are your liabilities coming from? I just don't see it, and we have the experience positive in another county park hunt that's already gone on for six years, for the whole season. I'm not speaking for or against what you decide, but I am telling you that the liability as far as us sanctioning it isn't an issue.
Okay. Thank you, John. So, at this time, we'll close the public hearing, and is there any discussion? And I, again, I think that, you know, when I was personally approached about the area close to Obie Nelson, there was a potential compromise in there because it is so close to some residential areas. But again, the limited scope of the whole operation maybe balances that out, but.
Well, when we were, the Public Safety Committee was reviewing this whole thing. We reviewed setbacks that the DNR had put in place, and then the different cities that have hunts had some slight variation, how far away from buildings, how far away from trails. We went on the further-away side of the range, just to add to safety. So, again, it's not that we've made this up, we're just modeling after other successful urban hunts, and apparently, those setbacks worked for them and kept it accident-free for 15 years.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that from, you know, I don't really, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other if the Obie Nelson area is used or not, so it's, you know, I'm just throwing it out there, if somebody wants to take that part off, I'm okay with that, too, so.
I guess I feel that because, you know, of the timeframes that we have established that it's kind of unfortunate to make the change. I mean, it's not like we're opening it up for an indefinite period of time. I mean, it's, you know, basically very monitored in terms of what the dates will be and some things like that. So, I guess, from that aspect, I don't feel as concerned as what everyone is projecting that, you know.
And I agree. I think I'd like to leave it as-is for this trial hunt, and then maybe readdress it later after we.
Okay. If there are any other comments? If not, entertain a motion to approve the third and final reading of the deer ordinance amendment.
I move to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
No.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you, counsel, and thank you for the Public Safety Committee and for the comments from the public throughout this. We will do everything we can to provide this in the safest manner to the citizens of Fairfield. Next, Michael, we'll ask for your report on the ashbore, Emerald Ashbore.
Sure. Yeah, so, state DNR Urban Forest Manager had invited our Sustainability Coordinator, Scott Timm, and myself to attend an EAB Emerald Ashbore Conference in Burlington about a week and a half ago. We ended up actually, we were invited to speak on behalf of what our plan of action is, which they really thought was a good model for other communities. What I learned was we're only, we're one of only four Iowa communities that actually have infestations. I thought that it had moved from west, or from east to west, but actually, it was brought here most likely from infested firewood, probably from Burlington. And Burlington didn't know they were infested at the time, and so, it's no one's fault, but that's what, that underscores the importance of the quarantine, that you don't bring any wood outside the quarantine area, because that's how this pest is spread. Basically, we're on the right track in terms of our approach of not going with treatment. The chemical treatments are very intense, and they end up leading to bee colony decline, bird death. They basically kill indiscriminately. So, the city of Burlington is moving towards banning soil drenching. You put the toxic insecticide around the base of the tree, well, that just gets right into your water supply. And as one of the 100-plus foresters who were in audience said, "It doesn't make sense to poison your environment to save a tree that's going to die anyway." And the economics of it are that if you keep treating it, once you get to the 10-year mark, you're just spending more than any tree could possibly be worth. So, we're moving in the direction of replanting. We'll just replant, accept our fate. When those trees go, hopefully, we'll replant it ahead of time, and the smaller, the younger trees will be growing up. So, we've got a preliminary inventory of our right-of-way trees. Looks like about 12% are ash. They're not evenly spread out either. There are whole streets where it's all ash, and that's going to make the biggest difference for those people on those streets. So, we'll start working immediately to target the replanting for next year, what areas we're going to go ahead and replant. And we do have to make a new, or some amendments to our tree ordinance. Essentially, we have to deal with the, have to add something in there, the nuisance code for private trees that are infested, because they can't just be left once they're dead. So, that's going to be coming down the line. We're looking at maybe six to eight years before pretty much every ash tree in our town is most likely dead at that point. Infestation spreads pretty quickly, and it spreads exponentially year to year. So, there's more information, but that was basically, we learned that we're on the right track. We've got some work to do. The Arbor Committee's working on public education. They're also working on adding some new information to the tree ordinance, which the Environment Committee will work on and bring to the council, hopefully, January or February, to include an updated list of appropriate species for the right-of-way. We did see recently, I'm not pointing any fingers, but some property owners took it upon themselves to replant between some ash trees. Now, that's great, but they didn't have anyone check with the city, and you actually do need a permit to plant the right-of-way. So, obviously, some education needs to be done to make sure that the spacing's right, they do a utility check first, and that the species are in our approved list. Our list actually currently approves green and white ash, so it obviously is in need of updating. But we also don't want to see too much of one species in one area, because if something comes through like this and takes out every species, you know, if you keep it diverse, diversity is the key in the replanting, so we don't have this situation again, we don't have a Dutch elm situation again. So, all replanting efforts will be diversity-focused.
Thanks, Michael. Counsel, I just wanted to give you a brief update on another grant application that we're working towards, which we do sometime in January, the end of January, and that would be our CDBG grant for facade restoration. There are a couple of things that we've learned in the last couple of months, and one is that the grant now requires that there be a minimum of 15 properties in it, and prior to that, there wasn't necessarily a designated number, they just wanted those that would have the most visual impact. This is a $500,000 grant. We would be asking property owners to match 50% of that, so this is an overall million-dollar project for the downtown, spread out over a minimum of 15 properties. That's really not a lot of money. There's probably not going to be a lot of large renovation, repair that's done. These will probably be more awnings and windows and different things that will kind of upgrade the beauty of the facade in front. We're still hopeful that the grant is successful. We have 15 or possibly more property owners now. I got two more over the weekend. But anyway, we're just, we're very close to kind of having everything in place for the grant, so hopefully, we'll get a chance to review that in January. And that's pretty much it. I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving this week. We'll adjourn to December 16th, and then, following that, we'll have our city Christmas party that I hope everyone will be able to attend also. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Ending adjourn.